I call to order the City of Woodenville Planning Commission's special meeting for Wednesday, July 10, 2024. May we have the roll call, please?
Chair Stadler?
Here.
Vice Chair Yabroff? Commissioner Martin?
Here.
Commissioner Turcot?
Here.
Commissioner Lang? Commissioner Mesa? Commissioner Krebs?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner, Vice Chair Yabroff and Commissioner Mesa had advised us that they would not be able to attend tonight.
Motion to excuse Vice Chair Yabroff and Commissioner Mesa.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Turcot and a vice chair, and a second by Commissioner Krebs to excuse Vice Chair Yabroff and Commissioner Mesa. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, aye? And abstained? They are excused. Please stand and join me in the flag salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any changes to the agenda in order and content? Seeing none, we have our agenda in order and content. That will take us to public comments. I will call your name. When you come forward to the podium, please state your name and whether you live in the city of Woodenville or not, and you will have three minutes to do public comment. I will mention that we do have one public comment that came in on, in the written form, and that will be entered into part of the record. First up is Jeff Lyon.
Hi, I'm Jeff Lyon. I'm a resident of the City of Woodenville. The Emu rezone is coming at us like a freight chain. This will be a little bit repetitive in that you've kind of already heard my pitch on this rezone and why I have concerns about it. I know, or I believe this is probably one of the final meetings for making some decisions about putting this rezone into the comp plan. I don't want to make any major challenges to the plan that was already discussed over and over again at the prior planning commission meetings. But I do want to just reemphasize something here, which is, this is kind of cut off, but what I'm holding here is all of the different ideas that were brought to this commission. So there's like an option A, and option B, C, et cetera, right? What was common with these options was Area A. This is everything that is to the west of 202. This is also the, everything west of 202 is 50% of that, or more than 50% of that, including the CBD, is owned by a private equity group called MRM. And I've kind of pointed this out in the prior comments. The reason I'm reemphasizing this is the letter that I've already handed out, so each of you should have a copy of this letter. MRM has written the council and said, "This is not economically feasible for us unless we get an exception for 85-plus-foot buildings." I've talked to members of this commission. Mayor Millman has said on Facebook, "I do not support buildings this high." And so I just want to pose the question, just something for us to think about before we make a call on what to put in the comp plan. If the only option available to us is you must include Area A, and according to MRM, for Area A to be feasible for them, we must have these towers. What actually is the outcome? Are we going to, are we going to allow those towers despite being against them? Or are we going to submit this plan and say, "Okay, we've met our obligations under GMA," but not actually achieve the affordable housing target? So just something that for this commission to think about, and I hope you can kind of discuss it and take a decision. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will just note for the record that Commissioner Lang has joined us remotely. Next up, Allison Farmer.
Hi. Allison Farmer, live outside the city limits. Well, I see like the big dumb bird is back for further discussions, so I'm here to discuss it again. Emu is technically legal, but it's not very ethical. In reality, it won't satisfy the low income or variety of housing needed, and unfortunately, the continued pursuit of it was also a delay in mandatory affordability of the CBD, which is needed. I am all for finding creative answers to problems, but not when they are detrimental effect. Emu would instantly kill two fabulous opportunities for Woodenville and many future ones that could flourish along the regional trail corridor. Upzone GB, and you make land more expensive for the city to buy for a possible rec center, and the close reality of an innovation center being placed here would become just a fleeting dream. Both valuable and exciting community resources that would provide jobs for residents and finance for the city. Don't lose this asset in a hurried band-aid fix. Find the numbers in already residentially zoned land. The majority of the low, very low-income housing required is already flagged as needing to be state-funded and will likely need city land, so you could get allowances for it. The remainder low-income figures could be achieved through minimum 10% mandatory affordability in all pipeline projects and remaining land capacity. At your last meeting, it was also mentioned you need to promote single, promote current single-family areas as locations where more affordable and varied housing choices could be integrated, such as cottage housing and multiplexes. You've heard single-family zoning has a racial impact, and you get more diversity on smaller lots. A large part of the city is large, single lots, and I don't see you being able to promote the housing variety or divide residential lots without upzoning some of the area, at least to multifamily. It was satisfied the numbers and was presented as an option to the city council. It was not chosen, as it was considered an unpopular choice, but this is planning for the city's 20-year future. Create an affair and balanced city, not about being popular, and it won't happen overnight. As for getting rid of retail in the downtown area, I urge you not to do that. It's a place Woodenville businesses started. To wipe out the retail element feels like sacrilege. I might come back to say more about that particular thing after your discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Dana Werman. Werman?
Hello. My name is Dana Werman. I live in downtown Woodenville. I'm speaking today in favor of rezoning all the areas of the proposed East Rail Mixed-Use Zone to meet our affordable housing needs. The area is ideal for multifamily housing, as it's walkable to downtown amenities and adjacent to the future East Rail, which would provide easy access to the future stride rapid bus station at the 522 and 405 interchange. People living in this area would have easy access to the sound transit S2 and S3 lines, connecting them to just about anywhere they would need to go in the region. This makes the Emu a more affordable and connected area to live for future residents, while also limiting additional congestion and pollution that Woodenville would see from added car traffic. I love living in downtown Woodenville. I love that I can walk to get groceries, to get a coffee, try a new restaurant or winery, walk to O'Mont Gateway Park, the farmer's market, or to the park and ride anytime I want to visit Seattle. People living in the Emu would have that same access and quality of life would add less to the car dependency and congestion than if they lived in more remote neighborhoods. Maximizing new housing in this area is the best option for affordability, economic activity, the environment, and quality of life. I appreciated Commissioner Turcot's comments in the last meeting pushing back on individual exemptions for business owners. Creating these exemptions and then adding needless further exemptions in order to avoid the appearance of spot zoning does not strike me as a good faith effort. Please keep in mind that future residents of the Emu are not present to advocate for themselves. I appreciate what Woodenville has contributed so far to the desperate need for more housing in this region, and I encourage the commission to continue to prioritize housing that maximizes walkability, transit, and bike trail access for the benefit of all residents. Thank you.
Thank you. That is everybody that has signed up. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to make public comment at this time? All right. Seeing none, we will move on to business items. First business item is a continued discussion on the comprehensive plan periodic review, GB mixed-use proposal. Mr. Grumbach.
All right. Good evening. Really appreciate everybody being here on a beautiful Wednesday and actually missing the concert over across the street from us. Just give me a second to pull up my presentation. All right. Is it going to come up? All right, there we go. All right. So the first item that we've got to talk about is basically titled "The Ground Floor Residential in the Central Business District Zone." So a little bit of background on why I'm bringing this to you. So Main Street, who I think mostly you may have heard before.
Mr. Grumbach?
Yeah.
Just as a point of order, the agenda is.
Did I get on the wrong one?
Yeah, we were going to do the contract.
There you go. I'm having a great day already on this. Sorry about that. Let me get the other one. Hang on.
Thank you.
I was just so excited to get on this one because I wanted to show it to you, but let's go ahead and get the other one up here. Oh, no, it's catching on to me more and more. All right. All right, the, I'll bring up the right one here. All right, so the discussion on the Emu, this is kind of continuing from our previous discussions. I've got basically two questions I want to talk with you about. One is to confirm where we were last time, and then I want to talk about the remaining parcels. But before we go there, I just want to really quickly go over kind of a reminder of how we've gotten to where we've gotten to at this point with the Emu. All right, so just a reminder, this is all coming about because we are required to update our comprehensive plans as part of what they call a periodic review. And an important piece of this, when we're looking at our comp plan, was not only to look at changes in state law, well, a couple things. Not only to look at changes in conditions around the community, that may have happened since our last update, which was back in 2015, but also any changes in state law. And then it's just a reminder, we have this deadline of December 31, which is the end of this year, to try to get through both the comp plan and development regulations. Although I'm not optimistic about the development regulations getting completed, but as long as we're making a good faith effort, we should be okay on that. The reminder about this House Bill 1220 we talked about, this was part of one of the changes in state law that requires for jurisdictions to plan and accommodate for housing that is affordable. And basically, what we're required to do is show sufficient capacity for housing that supports different income groups. And again, I think we talked about this a little bit before. This is stuff that the legislature had enacted in response to the state housing crisis, which I think most of us, we'd seen that in the news for the last couple of years. Not just in terms of numbers, but also there is a state housing crisis in term of affordability. And so they've been trying to see if they can initiate policies and legislation that might help, one, promote more production of housing, and, two, try to promote more production of housing that is affordable. So again, this is some of the things we've talked about a little bit before. Woodenville, it was assigned originally back in 2019, 2020. We worked with our fellow King County jurisdictions that were in our category of high-capacity transit communities to look at our allocation on how to divide that up amongst the different jurisdictions. Out of that process, Woodenville was assigned that we were supposed to plan for 2033 new housing units through the next 20-year planning cycle, which ends in 2044. So that's where we started out with. Then we ran into this new, these new changes that came towards the end of last year about being able to plan for housing at the different income groups. And so what King County basically did, they have a policy that said that in terms of planning for the different groups of low, moderate, and high-income housing, they divided this assignment up amongst all the jurisdictions in what they considered inequitable. So in other words, they took, they took a look at what our needs were, and they did this on a jurisdiction-by-jurisdiction basis, as well as the county as a whole. And then basically what they did is they took our 2033 housing units, and then they broke it down into the, and assigned targets under these three different categories. And again, I kind of want to put this as a reminder, because as we think about this, even though we kind of call these targets, they're, they're targets in the sense that these are planning numbers. And what the main purpose of GMA, what they're really trying to do more than anything else, is that we have to show that we're enabling the types of housing that would traditionally support these different household incomes. And I'll bring up that slide again on how that kind of determined. This is not necessarily a predictor of what will be built. In fact, I mean, here in Woodenville, we, the vast majority of homes being built here, and that we expect to be built at least in the near future, are these moderate-income homes. But what we're trying to do is enable more housing in the category of low income and basically show that we have the capacity and able to meet our targeted numbers. And up there in the right-hand corner in there, this is just showing you the different groupings, because under low income, there's actually several subcategories. But they don't necessarily make us break it down by those subcategories. They just make us bring them all together, which is basically anything between 0 and 80% average, medium income for King County. So it's people with those income levels that would be able to afford these units as defined in, by the federal government. So you may recall this, this is some, so Commerce was tasked with basically providing the guidelines as to how we were supposed to plan for these different housings in these different categories. And this particular table comes from Commerce's guideline. This is applicable to Seattle and East King County. We got kind of a different listing of housing types, a little bit different than the rest of the, everybody else, because of how much more expensive Seattle and East King County is. So within this, you can see, and I highlighted over in here, you can see the different types of zoning categories, so like low-density, moderate-density, and then what's in the mid-rise, high-rise tower and ADUs. And an indication of the types of housing that support that group, and then you can see all the way to the right, the average, medium-income household group. So single-family detached generally supports, and I don't think this surprises anybody, folks that are in the highest grouping of the average, medium income. And then you have in this moderate density, which is basically the 80 to 120%, you have housing more like what we talked about, when we talked about the middle housing, which is the townhouses, the duplexes, the multiplexes. One thing, and this is where in the places where we're affected, being under this table, is the ADUs. Where in other areas, other jurisdictions outside of Seattle and East King County, they can count those towards the low-income group. We aren't allowed to do that. We have to count those towards the moderate-income group. But then what we can count in the, in the moderate, or excuse me, in the low-income group are basically the mid-rise and the high-rise multifamily apartments, condominium-type developments. And you can see that these basically were these falling into the categories. Although the high-rise you'll see actually up here indicates 80 to 120%, those are actually like 75-foot and higher, so they actually in this particular table. But it's potentially possible to have those, although in our jurisdiction, 75-foot is the maximum height you can do here, and that's only through a development agreement. So we don't actually enable anything that's a high-rise tower here in Woodenville. So all of our stuff's either going to fall into the mid-rise, or it's going to fall into the low-rise, which is the townhouses, or it's going to be like the detached, single-family. So you may recall this slide. This actually kind of tries to bring everything and summarizes everything together. So countywide planning policies assigned a 2033 housing target to us, and then they broke it down in these individual groupings. You can see the low-income group, the moderate-income group, and the high-income group. I gave you an idea about what a household income, based on four people living in the household for 2023, what those earnings of the, of the people in that house would, would be, where, how they would fall into these individual categories. And then on the bottom, you can see the housing types that would need to be built to support that particular income group. So again, for Woodenville, it's the low and mid-rise. Again, this is basically your, your buildings that are like about two, about three to five stories in height, generally speaking. All right. And then we talked previously, we went over this before about the land capacity. I'm not going to go into this great detail. I think a lot of this might recall, you may recall me talking about this, where we had to do an inventory of vacant redevelopment lands, and then we applied these reduction factors. And then we had to evaluate the different types of housing that individual zones allow. And then we make some assumptions, and then we come up with the potential capacity of the number of housing units. Then we add into that the accessory dwelling units that are based on the recent GMA requirements. And then also, we add into the middle housing, other middle housing, which is the townhouses, the duplexes, the triplexes, and the multiplexes. Although again, those type of units will fall into the middle housing, but they do count in terms of total, or overall total housings that we're working towards. And then in this slide, I had broken down for you how it breaks down by our individual zones. Our lowest density, not surprising for anybody, is R1 and R4 zones. Those are our main single-family zones. And then in the moderate density, although these are predominantly still single-family, but there are other types of duplexes and townhomes and stuff, and that's our R6 and R8. And then we start getting into the low-rise, the multifamily types of developments, and that's in our R12, 18, 24, and then in the R48, and then also in the tourist business zone. One of the things to note, though, even though we have this enabled, most of our vacant properties in these zones is predominantly in the tourist business. And a lot of that's already being consumed with the Wine Village project that most of you are already familiar with. So there's not a lot of vacant properties in that zone. And then our mid-rise, that's our central business district zone. That's where we enable those and have the most height that we allow for residential-type development. And then, as I mentioned, the high-rise, we don't have any zoning that supports that currently. And then as part of this thing, I talked to you about this before, we have to make reasonable assumptions. So when we evaluate our capacity and determine that, you, you don't get to just count everything. And we talked about this, for example, in the CBD zone, where we do actually have a lot of overall housing capacity. But because historically, you have not seen a lot of, of the low-income housing being produced there, you, and you can't really, it's not really a reasonable assumption to say every single house that's mid-rise in the central business district is now suddenly going to become in the low-income group is the reason why we can't use that entire amount. We can only use what is considered a reasonable amount. Historical trends is one of the ways that we do those calculations. And so this was the results of that analysis. Again, in the lowest, you can see that Woodenville has a major deficit in the low-income range. And then if, and again, if you don't recall, I also put up here the pipeline projects, because we get to use that in terms of determining our ability to meet numbers. Pipeline projects are, are projects since 2019 that had some degree, whether it's just a development agreement, or whether they're actually even under construction. We get to add those housing units, and you see that in the pipeline units piece category there, and how many units are currently in that. So that leads us now into the East Rail Mixed-Use. So this idea, you may recall, originated not with the GMA requirements, but actually originated with the council and our economic plan. And it had to deal with the fact that we're putting a lot of money into the East Rail, which runs right along the corridor of the, of where this East Rail Mixed-Use is being proposed. And so council was trying to figure out how to best utilize it, because basically, you know, if you're going to put public money into something, you want to see what you, you want to get the maximum return that you can get on that. And so that's what originally prompted this whole idea, is that we're going to have this great investment and this great trail being improved. How can we best utilize this? And one of the things that came up on this was the idea is to enable additional residential. We already do it on the east side in the CBD zone area. This was now to add the other side of, of the road, of the old railroad tracks there, and also allow housing so we could have it potentially on both sides of that. And then it just turned out that by luck, the way Commerce put their guidelines, because they kind of give us this bonus, they give us like extra credit thing, because we're creating a new zone that currently doesn't exist, so there's no history. And they talk about this actually in their guidance, you know, if you're converting underutilized commercial areas, which our GB zone is, they kind of basically give you bonus points for it, so that you can actually count all of those units. So it wasn't intended that way originally, but it's, it ended up working in our favor that way.
So, excuse me, Robert, that last bullet point has a bonus, as I said, is Commerce skyline. Would that, that be the reason that we're not just changing it to CBD? Or what is the reason that?
In part, yes, but in part, it also because the council originally started out with this idea about creating a different zone, and they actually want to look at potentially different standards in it. It may not necessarily, it's, it's not, and we'll, when we get into the development regulations on this, we'll hash this out even more. But at least the initial feedback that I've gotten on this is one, for one, they were looking at this as a clean slate, as a way to promote affordable housing, even before we got into this whole thing with the GMA stuff. So council was thinking about affordable housing and how to promote more of that, even before GMA came up with these requirements and stuff, as far as bringing some clarity to it. So they've always envisioned that this zone was going to be something that we get to start, essentially, it's brand-new, you got Play-Doh on the table, you get to kind of shape it. And so that's why it's, and you know, and the CBD's already been shaped quite a bit with the regulations and stuff. So that's the reason why we just didn't go CBD on it straight up. All right. All right, so now it's going to get into the questions that I mentioned at the very beginning of this. Just as a quick reminder, this is what we went through at May 22. We discussed, we, I ended up breaking down much of the general business zone into these, into these smaller bites. And we looked at these bites in terms of the amount of vacant and redevelopment properties in them, and did the calculations to come up with these different options that we had talked through. And where the planning commission ended on, and I want to confirm this, is where we still are at, is that basically we're including A, B, C, D, E, all of it. And then also that purple area between B and C was all being included in it. So essentially, this is what it looks like, which I also show the calculations, we make the numbers on it, but I do want to start with that question. I just want to affirm that that is where the planning commission wants to move forward. Doesn't mean you still can't potentially modify this down the road, or the council can modify it, but I just need, I want to firm up that this is the intent and the direction you want me to go as we put our plans and everything together on this. So I will pause a moment and check in on that.
All right. Anybody disagree with that, that's where we settled? Commissioner Lang, do you have anything?
I definitely have concerns about this plan, because it is creating, I think I voiced my concerns in the past meetings about, about this plan. We should consider more options broadly, more broadly available options, because technically speaking, mathematically speaking, we have probably like more than 64, even, you know, combinations out there. We, my concern is first, we only consider a very well, narrow range of options that are available. Second thing is that creating this zone, we create a strong stigma associated with the residents of this, this zone. I think it's probably the unintended consequences, but I, by any means, since we're planning it, we should avoid it, you know, when we are planning this thing. Yeah, there are some other concerns as well, not as major as this too, but yeah.
Okay, thank you. So it appears the four commissioners here agree with your assessment of where we landed. Commissioner Lang does not.
Okay. And one of the other things you guys also had discussed about was about potentially about the affordability in the central business district zone. I just want to note, right now at the comp plan phase of things, we won't need, we don't need to dive into that detail. We'll get into that when we actually get to the development regulation, because that, that will actually be something for discussion about whether we, whether there is an interest in having mandatory affordability requirements, inclusionary zoning extended, not just in the Emu, but potentially into other zoning districts of the city as well, whether it's just the CBD, or even if it goes into any of the residential areas and stuff. So that, we'll get into that conversation when we get to the actual development regulations themselves. We'll have that conversation. All right. So that was the first part. So with that said, we do still have some GB zone properties. And I want to find out what your thoughts are on whether we should, should we just go ahead and continue to have a GB zone and maintain these as GB, even though we do have that one that kind of sits a little bit isolated, but that's, that's fine, because it was already existing that way? Or do we think, or do we want to look to potentially either rezone these also to Emu, or rezone these some other different way? Now, I gave you kind of a breakdown. I went through the King County parcel data on these parcels and was able to kind of look at the general uses on the properties. The big one up there, that's just north of 195th, over there by the, you know, the park zoning up there, to the east of 522 there. That's that big vacant property where floor and decor is planning to be ground later this summer. So even though there's a lot of vacant property, that's actually on that northern tip part of the GB, that's actually going to be developed here with a big box store here later this summer, and probably be opening up sometime next year. So just wanted to kind of get your, but it doesn't mean you couldn't still have it be Emu, if that's where you wanted to go with it. But I wanted to kind of get your guys' thoughts on what we should do with these remnant parcels.
Commissioner Martin?
What's the, what's currently on the parcel that's just above the CBD zone? The, the purple one that's off by itself, kind of, that first purple?
Jim, I believe.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Because that's actually in a really good location. If we wanted to include it in Emu, that is closer to Target and potentially walkable to the Hagan as well, and the park and ride. So I'd be interested in that one, if anybody else is. That's probably the only one. That's probably the only one since it's so close to CBD.
Thank you. Commissioner Turcot?
Just the nature of the walkability to that area, it could be problematic. So I just want to make a note on that. My son walks to Woodinville High School from around that area and it is dangerous. We see a lot of walkers and they are walking on the side of the road. So whatever this comes about, there's going to be significant modification for pedestrian safety that would have to come about if we consider that. What is the one above Gold's Gym, the outdoor storage? I'm not familiar with that property.
Yeah, I actually don't remember the breakdown. I mean, I just did the assess, I'd have to actually pull up the King County assessors. I don't remember where the parcel corresponds directly. Amanda, are you looking this up on your computer?
I think the one that he has marked as outdoor storage there, that's like on the same side of the road there, Woodinville Nomish Road as Gold's Gym. I think that's the one eight hundred got junk site.
Okay, because there was also the former Homeward Pets that was in there that's now like that, I think it's a hot tub.
The Clearwater Spas property, if that's what you're thinking of, is the industrial, there's like two industrial ones. They did a rezone just a couple of years ago to go from GB to industrial.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's just a fenced lot with stuff. I think the outdoor storage is literally just a fenced lot with chunks of metal and that kind of stuff.
I think there was a, or there is, they do like drilling, well drilling maybe or something like that. I want to see, I think I've seen equipment like that in there too. Yeah, I don't know. I mean, touching on what Commissioner Turcot said about the pedestrian safety, we will have the trail going through there eventually, so we're going to have that. I'm kind of thinking that, you know, that's on the other side of the road, separated from the area we're looking at. Did you have anything else, Commissioner Krebs?
No.
Okay. Oh, Commissioner Lang, did you have anything you wanted to put in there? I'm sorry. So I'll continue there. So you do have the, the road and the trail separating it, so there's a bit of a buffer from that kind of area. My initial thought is too, then you have the industrial, you know, around it, might be not a good idea to change that to EMU and that, so I'm thinking, my initial take on it right now, first look is to leave it as GB.
Is that where the majority of you are feeling the same?
I don't know. Chad?
Yeah, I'm kind of thinking. The current version of what we're looking at with the mixed use, not the additional parcels.
And that would include also leaving Gold Gym as GB then as well or?
Commissioner Lang, anything there?
No, I don't think, I think by position, as being, you know, we really want to, could have, you know, have a zone in the GB so that we can actually reduce the size of, dedicate the EMU space. That's, has been my position and I don't have to comment on this particular issue.
Okay, you got that?
I think. So basically what we've got here, we'll keep the GB zoning on the remnant parcels and we'll keep that also then in our comp plan and in our zoning map.
And again, we can always change your mind.
Yes, all the way up until final action by council and then of course, anything, so it'll always subject to change in future.
All right.
All right, that's, that's all I had on this one. Just reminding you on some dates coming up. Next week, Amanda and I will be out here at the celebrate Woodinville concert. We're actually going to be talking about the EMU and middle housing as part of educating the public on what's going on with this. And then we have an open house a week from this Saturday where it's actually transportation people I think are joining us too, but it's going to be mostly about, and I think mostly you've got the postcard, I've mentioned this before. And then if things stay on target here, hopefully we'll be looking potentially for public hearings on some of our drafts on our comp plan by this early fall. So just want to give you kind of a schedule and start letting people know about the schedule that's coming up as things are moving forward.
All right, thank you. Now, the next business item, discussion of the code amendment to allow ground floor residential facing public streets in the Old Town neighborhood, CBD.
All right, now that I built this up, it'll probably be very disappointing, but that's I killed it myself, so. Just take a second here. All right, kind of like how I started talking about here before, while this is kind of trying to come up, all right, there we go. So Main Street had submitted a request for a change to the zoning code. What they wanted to do was to be able to allow for ground floor residential dwelling units facing public streets in the central business district zone. We already have some allowances for this already, but they wanted to be able to have this extended to Old Town. And I'll talk about a little bit more of this in a moment, but Main Street is interested in building some townhomes on property in the Old Town District. City Council, we did a presentation to City Council on Main Street's request at the council's May twenty-first meeting. And at that meeting, they did vote to place this on your work plan, so that is the reason why we are now bringing it forward to you for conversation. And basically what I'm looking in tonight is, we haven't started drafting anything up. I've got some policy questions, I think it'll be fairly short, but have a couple of policy questions before I determine on how to, before I bring a proposal back to you. So I'm going to talk a little bit about Main Street's project, but I do want to, the note I have on the bottom of this, I just want to mention this because we've had this, you know, we've had these things before where applicants have project ideas and then they ask about zoning changes and stuff like that. So while I'm going to talk to you about the Main Street project a little bit, it's what they at least given to us conceptually, I do want you to keep in mind that the main reason we tell you about the project is just to kind of give you some concepts and some things to help shape the discussion on this. But ultimately, the decision, whatever decision you make in your recommendation for council, because council is asking for you to make a recommendation to them on this, it's not about the individual developer or applicant that submits the request. What you want to be doing is considering these requests based on what is the broader public interest. So we use these applicants when they, when they make these requests, this is kind of what triggers it. We use it to kind of help shape the conversations and stuff. But ultimately, the decision on this isn't about the developer, it should be about what is in the public interest as a whole on this. So, and in this case, it's a discussion about whether we should have ground floor facing the streets in the Old Town. And as I go through this, it'll make a little bit more sense why this, this may make some sense. But to the Main Street project, this is the address, it's basically the old West Point property. Some of you have been on the planning commission long enough to remember, we did a development agreement on this five years ago? I think it was five years ago.
Twenty eighteen, so yeah.
Yeah, five years ago. They're halfway through it. And anyway, so Main Street's interested in potentially purchasing the property, but they don't want to build the Main Street project, excuse me, they don't want to build the, the West Point project that was being proposed. Instead, what they're interested in potentially doing is building townhomes on the property. And so this is all just concept right now, but they're talking about thirty to thirty-nine market rate townhomes and for townhomes that might be in the moderate income range. Again, this is what their request is, that doesn't mean that's necessarily how this all ends up, it's just what their initial request on it. And then they were willing to add a little bit of commercials, not much, but they are talking about maybe a little bit of commercial on one of the corners and I'll show you, I think it's maybe in my next one, yeah. This is kind of the site plan, I think this may have been in your packet, but if it was, no, I didn't put it in your packet, did I? I don't think I included that in there. I did do that. Okay, you see my memory's going really great today. But anyway, so you can take a look at that. This is kind of their initial concept. Again, this may not necessarily look exactly like this, but this is kind of the concept that they put together and you can see basically, because there's, the West Point property has streets on both sides of it, one seventy-third place and Woodinville Drive on the other side of it. And so you've got this restriction about dwelling units that ends up applying on these properties that aren't very deep, but this is kind of what they were looking at, potentially putting dwellings on each of the public streets. And then they'd have the garages and the private driveway on the backside where you could enter into this. And again, these are some of the early concepts that they were thinking about what the buildings might look like. I do want to note, this has not been reviewed for compliance with design standards, so I don't know whether those buildings can look like this or not, but this is kind of what they had put into their packet. And then this is in lieu of what West Point had proposed, which for those that were on, will remember some of this. This is what their project looked like. It was actually a pretty big project, one hundred and seventy-sixty-one dwelling units, twenty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-three square feet of commercial space, two hundred and thirty installed parking garage. And basically what's happened is two problems. One, the parking makes the project infeasible because of the size of the units, because most of the dwelling units in this thing are proposed at, I think they were about seven hundred down to under five hundred square feet. And when you take the cost of the units and what they can rent or sell these things for, the project just isn't penciling out for anyone. Main Street took a look at doing something like this and modifying it and determined it just wasn't going to work. So Farr, who owns this property and had done the development agreement, is, at this point, I think he's willing, because he hasn't been able to find anybody to do the property, he's been just looking to see if he can find a buyer for the property. And as I mentioned, Main Street doesn't want to do the project that was on the development, for the development agreement. They will want to do something that's townhouses, that works a little bit better for the type of work that they generally do. So before I go into this, any questions about what I just talked about in terms of Main Street and West Point?
Commissioner Krebs?
Not necessarily a question, I guess, but isn't this, didn't they just build, not they, whoever just built, like a four-unit apartment or townhome right in the middle of this project?
No, Main Street didn't. There was a different developer down the street that built. That's the Villa.
Yeah, I think it's nine units.
Nine units, yeah, but it's not this, that was more of a mom and pop operations.
It's just, it's the next block down basically or over.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right. All right, so a little bit of background about residential in the central business district zone. So currently the code, twenty-one, forty-two, oh, four, oh prohibits residential dwelling units on the ground floor in buildings facing public streets. You can, you can have dwelling units on the ground floor, but you have to basically have commercial, at least thirty feet of commercial. In the case of a lot of this area, you have what we call active uses, active commercial uses, but you've got to have on the ground floor, you have to have at least thirty feet of commercial between the dwelling units and the public street. Now, this doesn't apply to private streets, this is just talking about the public streets. There are some exceptions in this map, some of you have also been around long enough when we updated this. So in the areas on green on here, you can have residential facing the public street through a development agreement, if the council approved the development agreement. And so, so we do have some allowances for it, but you have to go through this process in order to be able to do that. Most of that allowance is in our pedestrian core design district, which was one of the areas when we put our original plans together and we talked about creating a more dense, active mixed-use area. The pedestrian core was kind of where a lot of that was all being focused. And so that included a lot of, being able to try to get a lot of residential in there. And in order to make some of this work, you know, we've had, I think it was Woodin Creek Village originally came in and said they need to be able to have residential on the ground floor. And so that's then how this map ended up coming about. So a little bit of the history, so as I, we used to allow ground floor residential up until two thousand and ten. So prior to two thousand and ten, the CBD zone was a mixed-use zone. We allowed residential and commercial in the CBD zone, but we did allow the residential on the ground floor. And then in two thousand and ten, they had gone through this study and as a result of that study, they basically made this prohibition. And then a couple of years later, they created the map that I just showed you on the previous slide. So yeah, I think, and again, it was Woodin Creek Village that basically is why the previous map was created, but we did at one time allow it, then went away from it and then we allowed a little bit of it back. And then it's recently, it's twenty twenty, we modified the map from before, cleaned it up and there was a little bit of an expansion about residential there and it was also about the active uses. Council wanted to, I think before we had, it limited along those, we'll go back to the map a moment, along the blue here, we used to limit it to mostly retail. It had to be at least thirty feet of retail. Well, we know the retail, there's not a big market for it, but we still want to make sure streets were activated, so we came up with what was called active uses, which goes beyond just retail. It can also include personal services, it can include, I believe, professional offices and other types of uses that are, that would typically generate a lot of pedestrian traffic on the street. So the next couple of slides, it's going to just talk about a little bit about Old Town. So Old Town currently does not have this allowance about the dwelling units facing on the public streets. And when we think about Old Town, when I'm talking about that, it's that top map that you're showing. I show you the bottom map because that's the original eighteen ninety plat that was recorded, that's what they had recorded in there. And what this all consists of, this Old Town area consists of twenty-nine parcels, six-point-five acres, but here's one of the big key problems we run into, and that is that lots here are pretty small. They're not very deep, they're a hundred feet deep, which means you have at least on the one side, if they're on the top part there, those lots basically only have forty feet within them that you could have any residential on the ground floor, which you're really not going to get any dwelling units. So essentially, you would have to have entirely commercial on the ground floor and that's, there's questions about whether the market's supporting some of that. So that's where a lot of this comes about. And then on the backside, and I'll have the next map, I think shows this, you've got still also the thinner lots, but on the backside of that, you have the R four zoning over there. So this is going to get into the policy, this is showing you the zoning. So the top one, the A, that's showing you that the Old Town neighborhood is zone central business district. And then just to the, what I guess it would be north, to the east of it, there in the gray, that's industrial zone across the street from Woodinville Drive. And then on the back half, where you start seeing the slopes and stuff, that's all R four zoning, not, a lot of that's actually fairly low-density vacant property because of the slopes and also because of, there's power lines and stuff back there. So it's not a, an area that there's a lot of development taking place on. So one of my first questions here, in talking about allowing ground floor residential to face the public streets, there's three alternatives up here that I'm showing you. One of those would be that we would just allow the ground floor, and I'll figure out what the regulations themselves will look like later, I just need to get an idea about how to start drafting this. Option A would be that the entire Old Town neighborhood would be CBD zone. Option B would be just those parcels that are between one seventy-third place and Woodinville Drive. And option C would be the original Old Town, it would just exclude the, the part to, I guess that would be the southern parts of it, right? This doesn't necessarily totally line up, but it would be the, to the furthest right you see down, those would be excluded. Or if you have a different thought on a different configuration, that can be considered too. So I'll stop there and see what your thoughts on this are.
Commissioner Martin, it looked like you want to say something.
Yeah, because the lots are so small, it seems like we should allow ground floor residential, but I hesitate, if we allow ground floor residential, is it going to become, are we going to replace all of those small businesses that are currently there with large housing developments? That's what I hesitate around. So I just want a little discussion around that.
Thank you. Commissioner Turcot?
So I, this is more of a question, with this thirty-foot depth of commercial space required, can you speak a little bit more about that?
Yeah, so I mean, our code basically has, so again, it's on public streets, not private streets. So like when you look over here at the Woodin Creek project, the road that's in the middle there, not going, not one thirty-fifth or one thirty-third, but Village Road, that's a private road. So a standard like this doesn't apply along private roads, it only applies along the public roads. And so what the requirement is, you can have things like, you can have lobbies, you can have, if it happened to be like a senior facility, you could have a cafeteria and things like that that are all part of the residential that support it. But what you're not allowed to do is have the dwelling units themselves actually face on the public street. They can in the upper stories, that's okay, but on the ground floor, you have to have at least thirty feet. But on the ground floor, you have to have at least thirty feet of a non-residential, or non-dwelling units, I'll rephrase that, non-dwelling units between the dwelling, the dwelling units that are on the ground floor and what is on the street.
Okay, so my, my main concern is parking. That's why I chose to sit in this seat. If they design these, since they are so narrow, if they design these with a garage facing, kind of like your typical complex you would see, like in Redmond, that they have down there by QOC, it's a garage, and then they have actual three floors of living space. So that would count as not having to have that thirty foot.
No, it would, because the garages are part of the residential dwelling.
So, I mean, that seems like a simple answer that, that would prevent this from having to be looked at, you know, make your design match the limitations of the property. So having parking, I think, would be critical. Just have them redesign them so that you have a garage in the front, and you could have two to three stories.
No, the garage won't work, the garage doesn't count towards those uses. The garage is considered part of the dwelling unit, so it's not, that doesn't get them around this thirty-foot limitation.
Is there anything else that gets them around this?
Code change, that's why it's here.
That's it? Okay. And also, why are there, the townhouses one hundred to one-twenty instead of including that eighty percent of?
That's what they've put down, that doesn't mean that's where this is going to end up. So again, like I said, that's why I said you use that just as, it's a concept, but that doesn't necessarily mean, because the next question I'm going to have into is, how do we enable, do we do the same thing? But we'll get to that in the next slide.
Okay.
Right now, I just need to get an idea of what option, what option to design the, the code amendment around.
So your thought, you asked your questions, now your thought.
The garage was my thought, but that's not possible, so.
So yes to any of those options, no to any of those options, or? I think, I heard Commissioner Martin say she wants to maintain the?
I, if we're going to do an upzone in that area, I think we should do all of it. But if we're not going to do it, I don't think we should do any of it.
Thank you.
That's how I see it.
Commissioner Turkot. Do you want to think about it a little bit more? I can, we have a couple of other commissioners. Commissioner Krebs.
There we go, I'm just trying to kind of visualize the space to see what it, what it might look like. I'm kind of leaning towards B, but I think I need to think more on it to, to look at what the roads, those roads look like, the surrounding areas, what those walk-ups would look like if there was not the required business spaces between them.
Commissioner Lang.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Sutter, appreciate it. So I think, I echo some sentiments about this, we should do it either, you know, all the neighborhood or none of the neighborhoods, to avoid any kind of potential allegations of a parking zoning, things like that, because the zone itself is not that big to begin with, right? And the second thing is, I always want to advocate for more affordable housing. I mean, if they want to get exception like this, code change like this, I would say, well, this is time for the public to ask for more affordable housing. What I see in the slides definitely is not adequate to, because they're talking about, like, ten percent of units for moderate-income housing, that's not even affordable housing by the street standard. So, yeah, personally, I want to say, well, we want to get more for the city, a lot of those, those special code amendments, because this is not really necessarily to the best interest of the city to just blanketly write them a check, say, well, yeah, go ahead and do this for housing. And third, I said, definitely, I totally concur to what Commissioner Turkot was saying, we need more parking, right? So that's one of the places that I think we should use more parking, because parking is always a huge challenge over there, every time I go there. Thank you.
So I think what I heard you say is that you would support ground-level residential in that area, as long as we did the whole area?
Yeah, get a whole area and go get public benefits attached to the code.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so I'll jump in there too. You know, I think the idea of housing there is good, because we're going to have access to the trail. We own that, a portion of it. King County has a portion too. And I believe there is a hope that someday to repurpose the bridge over the river that's north of the, the bridge, so that we can tie into that. And that, the property that they're, the rail that we own goes quite a ways down there and is pretty wide. So I think there's some things that we can do there and would tie into the other area as well. I too would say to do the whole area, I don't want to do parcel it out. I, along with Commissioner Krebs, would want to go over and take a better look at it. Is there a possibility to do those renderings, but do it with an actual aerial view? That's much more easy for me to, or, or provide the parcel numbers and we could go online and, and if?
Yeah, I mean.
Because I can't, I can't honestly tell from those illustrations what it would mean. So I can't, I can't answer A, B, or C on those.
You mean, as far as you want to see what's on the ground there?
Yeah. Sorry, I, yeah, I can't tell from the illustrations what we're talking about, other than I know we're talking about Old Town.
Well, I think most of us are familiar, a lot of the buildings there are not necessarily in the best shape. We do have trouble with parking and stuff over there, so. But that's part of that's because these lots are so small, there's no room for parking on them currently. So that, in redevelopment, you would have your parking standards would have to be met. The main property, you know, Main Street's looking at, the West Point property is currently vacant, is that big vacant piece. And then I think a lot of the other properties have, but we can bring, I mean, moving forward on this, if you, if you want us to pull up areas, we can. I don't know, well, I'm just wondering maybe if I want to maybe just, I might bring up the arrows just on this, or if you want to try to do that. Did you have the area still up on there?
I can easily get back.
I can stop.
I know, I know that would be helpful to me.
I can stop sharing right now.
So, but I definitely think, yeah, we, we should be doing the, the whole thing and not pick parcels. Commissioner Martin.
I drive up there a lot to go to Trader Joe's, that's the main road I take. And for the most part, we, I don't spend a lot of time over there, but I have gone, there's a little wine store that works with the hot air balloon company that I've taken trips on. So there are some really unique, small businesses, but for the most part, there isn't parking and there isn't good sidewalks. I think the new building that went in with the apartments has a nice sidewalk, and then it ends on both sides of that lot. So if we are going to do ground-floor units, we, I would love to see, of course, sidewalks for the people who actually live over there, because it is dangerous to walk. And we'd have to do the, at some point, we have to do that stretch of sidewalk up to the, up the housing up on that upper road. So if we're going to upzone it, we'll have to look towards doing those construction plans as well. I think it's like eight million.
So this property, the, the one that Main Street's looking at is the horseshoe and the residential properties to the west of that, correct?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, it's a big vacant piece.
The horseshoe, all the way up, I don't think it includes this one here that has the power lines on it, but these four in between, or five.
And that.
One, two, three, four, five.
Right, and that's the one that currently has a development agreement on it.
Which one?
The, the home next to the horseshoe would be.
Yes, so from the horseshoe there going?
All the way to?
Yeah.
This one here, so this stretch here, five.
And, and to the road.
Oh, yeah.
It's madness there, if you've ever been there, around, any, anywhere close to rush hour time, it's absolutely madness, plus you have all the buses.
So yeah, so it would be all this in here.
Correct.
Right, that's, that's the West Point property.
Right. Amanda, can you slide now down?
Yep.
To show us more of what's in there?
You want down this way?
Yeah, so I guess I'm more concerned, I understand that part there in the middle, and the other option then would be in the, this?
Sorry, I'm just looking, I think the?
This area in here, is that what you were talking about, or?
This was B, is that correct, Robert? I can't remember now what your slide had.
Just that side of the, between Woodinville Drive and One Seventy-Third was A, and then?
Oh, no, sorry, A was all of Old Town.
A was all of them, and then B, yes, B was just between the two roads, and then?
Oh, and then C is almost everything except for like the Marriott property, and there's another commercial property, these two would be excluded. So it's almost all of Old Town, but not all of Old Town.
It's, it's the original Old Town plat, not the pieces that have been added on since.
So your, your things are all, or this stretch?
Yeah, I don't know, are we talking about any of this along here at all?
I mean, that is part of the all option, or I guess both option A and C.
Would have that.
But certainly, I don't think Robert wrote these as the only options, they're just points of discussion, so if?
Right. And then you have the R-four zoning in that tree area, that's all R-four zoning in there.
Up here, so?
Right.
And, yeah, so like these properties back up to R-four zoning. And it's also pretty hilly, pretty steep, so that's, I think, part of the reason, like, these developments chose to put a bunch of it in trees.
Because all of that is currently CBD now?
Mm-hmm.
Even, even on the other side of One Seventy?
Correct, the uphill side.
The uphill side, until you get to the R-four.
What's hard about this area is because the roads are on a diagonal, like?
Right.
It's harder to just say north or east.
Again, I think I, I would want to go out and take a look at that part of it, but my sense is, I mean, seems kind of silly to do, you know, part of it, that, that area between Woodinville Drive and One Seventy-Third?
And then just leave this strip as CBD?
Yeah, just leave that.
Well, it all stays CBD.
Oh, sorry.
Right, right, right. But what I'm saying is, to one side, say, you ha, you can, you know, you can have residential on the first, on the ground floor, and on the other side, you can, so.
Along the public street?
Yeah, yeah. So my initial thought is, is yeah, do the whole, that all of Old Town, I guess.
That seems like I, I've heard either none or the all seems to be the majority. And i, is that correct?
Yeah, I think I was kind of in the middle originally, but I think, looking at it now this way, I think it makes more sense, we're going to make a change to do the all approach, to allow for a ground floor.
And I mean, again, it, it doesn't prevent you from, when I bring the code language, if you guys decide that you want to do something a little bit different, it doesn't prevent that. This is just giving me the starting point on how to draft, what I'm going to bring to you for discussion, for the, yeah, for the discussion on a proposal, for a code amendment proposal.
Okay.
Okay, so let, if you can have back, I'll bring my thing back up.
Yeah, one second. No problem, I actually had it up, but then it wasn't scrolling right, because it got all weird, so, sorry, it took me an extra moment.
All right, so that, then the other policy question I have on this is, how do we want to enable this? If I can get this thing to work. And, all right, so the, oops, that was one too far. All right, so the last part here is, which is also in your packet, so I'm, I'm presuming the outright permitted with, use with no conditions is probably not where you want to go, but I want to verify that, because that's one option. The other option is, if we do kind of what we're doing with the rest of the CBD, it would be by development agreement. So that's where then we would negotiate whatever the affordability stuff is going to be. Or the, the final one would be not requiring a development agreement, but basically, we would list it to a certain conditions, like we kind of do in the tourist business zone, where you say you can have the residential on the ground floor, but you have to meet these certain requirements and stuff. So, so kind of wanted to get your thoughts as to how do we want to, and I kind of gave an example, this is a section of the code, I kind of gave kind of an example of what it might start to look like a little bit, but I wanted to kind of get your take as to how would this be enabled? Outright development agreement, or outright with conditions, or again, there could be other options too to be considered.
Commissioner Lang, your thoughts on the policy question?
Yeah, I like the third option best, because limited use subject to certain conditions, such as affordable housing and parking. And personally, I don't like the development agreements approach, because that's too many background deals that's transparent to the public. I'd rather have something like a, you know, limited right, subject to certain conditions. Thank you.
Commissioner Krebs?
Again, still kind of need to chew on this, which we'll do, but I'm leaning towards by development agreement, just to give the city flexibility to obviously build a code to kind of give a minimum base, and then maybe allow the city to, you know, get some public benefit to allow for maybe greater streetfront, or ground-level parking, sorry, not parking.
I would note too, you can also do by development agreement and conditions too. We did that, I think, in the TB zone, that's also an option, it's not listed up there, but that is also an option, if you want to combine the two.
Commissioner Turkot?
If we can, I, development agreement, I think gives us the most flexibility for input and maintaining the affordability factor, but if we can do that with, subject to certain conditions, that's the path I would go with.
Ms. Martin?
I'd like to combine the two as well. I think that gives us a, a starting point, you have to meet certain conditions, and then we can negotiate for more.
Yeah, right now, I'm, I'm like the, with certain conditions and also a development agreement, just to give us a little more flexibility.
Okay, seems like that's, I think that's the majority. All right, so I'll put some stuff together. I may try it for the regular meeting here in July, or as long as we still have a quorum for it, or if we miss that, then we'll bring it into the next meeting, because that's all I have. So unless there's any other questions, that's, that's it.
We see no other questions. All right, thank you very much. That will take us to our second round of public comments. Is anybody signed in? Is there anybody that would like to make a public comment at this time? Mr. Lyons, you know the drill.
Yeah, I'm Jeff Lyons, resident city of Woodinville. With regard to the Old Town discussion, it sounds like maybe some of the commissioners haven't really been down that way, or don't really know the area that well. Before taking decisions on this, I want to encourage the commission to go walk that strip. This is a really, really unique part of our city, a lot of small businesses down there, and many of them are underrepresented business owners. So the decisions that we make with regard to Old Town could displace those business owners and push them out of our city. Thank you.
Anybody else? Please come forward, state your name, whether you live in the city, and you have three minutes.
Allison Farmer, live outside the city of Bemis. Interesting discussion, I'm just a bit disappointed really that none of you respect the history of the area. It's literally where Woodinville started out as Woodinville, and I don't think that should just be wiped out with just one move. I know it's not practical for businesses, but I've actually been in many of the businesses in there, and I've never had trouble getting parked. I've been, when the flower shop was there, I was there Bill Butchers, I've been to the Cook House, I've been to the, the, what was the restaurant, Twisted Cafe when it was there. Haven't been in the Mexican shop there yet, but they are, they're under, they're minority businesses. It's another affordable area you're just going to wipe out. Businesses wouldn't have started if they didn't have the money to start. I just don't think it should be wiped out. I think there's some things that aren't practical, but they need to be saved. I'm from the UK, where things are allowed to grow old. Over here, I just see things get wiped out, I see people spending millions on city halls and saying they're only going to last fifty years. You know, there are, there's actually some of the original buildings there. They don't qualify for this historic register, because they've been changed a bit, but there's some historic stuff there. And it's even on the Woodinville Wine Map as a historic area, that's where I found some information. So I think there should be more consideration to this particular area. I don't think it should be taken casually, and just as a practical thing for that area, it should be treated separately, as a unique. You know, you can imagine with all the apartments, and then it would be so quaint to just go over to the historic area and see what things used to be like. Please hang on to the history, yeah, and just take a bit more thought about it, and go and visit businesses and things. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, so, yeah, I just will make a, a, a quick comment here on, um, this is just the start of a conversation, there hasn't been a decision made, but in order to consider all the views, we have to kind of work through this process, so, um, what we've talked about tonight, um, is not a final decision, and that's still, um, down the road. This commission, um, spends a lot of time on these issues and, um, studying them, so, um, we will continue to do that. Um, with that, um.
Before you adjourn it, do we want to say something about our two commissioners that are going to be leaving us?
Well, did I say I was adjourning?
You're getting close.
As a special meeting, we don't have, um, commissioner comments, but, um, we're going to kind of break that rule a little bit. Um, we're losing two commissioners tonight, this is their last meeting, Commissioner Martin and Commissioner Turcot. Um, you know, life changes and we have to make decisions, and, um, it's, it's unfortunate for the city of Woodinville that, uh, your lives have changed, because, um, I think you both have been a great asset to this commission. Commissioner Martin, I know it's a short time, but I think you have brought a new, fresh perspective, um, from a generation far removed from me and, um, some of the other commissioners, so appreciate that. Wherever you end up, I hope you will continue with your civic passion and, um, be part of any community you live in. I'm confident you will do that. Um, Commissioner Turcot, um, it's been a quick four years, um, and I, every meeting I have appreciated you and what you have brought to the discussion. Um, I said at a meeting, I can't remember if it was the last one or the one before, um, you made some comments that changed how I looked at things, and that has happened on multiple occasions. Um, so for that, I appreciate, I appreciate your service to the city of Windinville. Um, and with that, I'm going to let, see if either of these commissioners have anything they want to say before we adjourn. Commissioner Martin?
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you to Robert and the staff, um, for being so welcoming and teaching me so much about the city. And I wanted to thank my fellow commissioners for also teaching me so much about, um, being on a commission. And I want to thank the city council for appointing me. It's been a blast being here. And I want to thank everybody in Woodinville. I've had such a good time living here in the past few years, and I'm really sad to go. Um, I accepted a new position at work, and I'll be working in person out of state, so I do have to move for that. Um, but I've had such a blast, and I've learned so much, and I really care for the city, and I hope everything goes well with the upzoning, and it continues to grow and flourish here. Thank you.
And Commissioner Turcot, you have the last word.
I'm just going to say ditto to what you said. Um, I've had a blast here, I've, I really appreciate all the hard work that goes into what we're doing here. And, um, just knowing that I had a little bit of effect on what this city is going to look like, I'm not going far, and I'll be here half time, but I just won't be within the city limits.